Okay, this is Jeff Waddell and I'm filling in as the, I guess we call it temporary chairman because of the vacancy. First question is, well, first I'll say we're called to order at 6:02 on December 1st, Tuesday night, Zoom meeting. We're getting pretty good at these Zoom meetings. Okay, first thought question is, do we have any visitors or citizens that want to speak at this time? And let me add, that's, that's apart from the regular agenda items. This is just the standard forum question we always ask at the beginning.
And I'll add that I have not received any comments or anything from the public in advance of the meeting.
Okay, thank you. So first item on the agenda is consideration and possible action regarding minutes of the regular meeting held on October 6th, 2020 and November 3rd, 2020. So we'll be looking for a motion to approve those minutes.
This is Brittany and I will make a motion to submit the meeting minutes from October 6th and November 3rd, 2020, as written.
Very good. Thank you. All those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, there's the second, okay.
Was that Carol? I'm sorry.
Who was that?
That Carrie. Thank you.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Are there any opposed? The motion, the motion passes. Okay, moving on to item number two on the agenda. Consideration and possible action on appointment of officers. Okay.
See here in your information packet that the excerpt of the code that describes how the, the commission establishes its offices. Obviously, the chairperson is important because that's gonna, that's gonna be the person that runs the meeting as well as a vice chairperson. In the event that the chairperson's absent, it helps to have someone there established as who is going to run the meeting. Staff does all of your administrative work, so I, while I personally don't see any benefit in appointing a secretary or treasurer or any of those positions, it is entirely at your pleasure.
And Susan Henley is able and willing to continue on as secretary for P&amp;Z? I'm sure I assume.
I think I've inherited most of those duties.
Okay, okay, although that's, I'm sorry, that's, that has been what's been happening, yes. Very good, well, same question, yes. I know personally, I feel very comfortable with that. If you would continue on as secretary.
Absolutely, I'm happy to do it. I think, you know, from your ranks, I think the chairperson and vice chairperson are the two positions that, that you guys should consider.
Yes, absolutely.
With regard to that, Jeff, it seems like you're the obvious choice to fill the chairperson role. Is Carol not on the commission anymore because she's now on council or what's the seniority?
Yes, good question. Yes, Carol has moved on to city council and of course you cannot do both. And she had a little over five years with us on P&amp;Z and we're looking forward to more great things from her on city council. But yes, that's why we've had all of a sudden, just in the last few months, quite a bit of a change here with turnover of people because of that. And of course Nelson Cox, he was the chairman for 10 years, he did 10 years and he was ready to move on and, and we understand that completely. As a matter of fact, let me just say this now, that if we were not having a virtual meeting and having the real deal, it would, let's just say we're doing kind of a virtual plaque to, to all those involved. Nelson Cox, for 10 years of service, I will just mention two things that he always said and that was, you know, this is a privilege for us to be able to be involved with our city and be involved with the city positions. The two things he appreciated was people showing up on a regular basis. So we always have a quorum. Probably years ago, that didn't always happen, but we've had a good, good, strong turnout, regular show up. And the other thing is, we do appreciate the business people, small businesses, whoever's asking for a request or a permit or a plan, whatever it may be. We appreciate that they actually show up in person. We realize that can't always happen and that's fine as long as they communicate what it is they're trying to do. But I just want to mention those two, two items because that's something that I'll always remember from, from Nelson Cox, that he was very, very consistent about expressing that. So I mentioned that to you all, being new, we'll end up having three new people. To pass, it's good to pass that on to, to other local businesses and when you're discussing anything, that we appreciate them showing up because it really helps them get to know us and, and get to know the city better. And usually we can iron things out if we have good communication. So again, I thank Nelson Cox for being so good about that. Carol Langley, she did a little over five years on P&amp;Z, following many, many years as, as city secretary. So she has a wealth of information, great history and she's been very helpful and I'm sure she'll continue to do great things with city council. And Bill Simpson, he's put in his time that is a, he's a busy, full-time working person. So we appreciate him putting in his time because it does take time to be prepared for the meeting. So we appreciate that and just wanted to give that brief history because we do have two or three new people coming in. So thank you, Brittany, for mentioning that. Since you came on board, we appreciate your experience. We know you've got some good background for this position on the commission. So I appreciate your, your comment. I'm perfectly comfortable with being chairman if that's okay with everybody. So let me go right into the procedure for that. First of all, we need to have a motion open to the floor for nominations to elect a chairman. And we're gonna go through this process twice for chairman and for vice chairman. So let's, go ahead.
Yeah, if you're ready. I will make a motion to nominate Jeff, you, for the position of chairperson of Planning and Zoning Commission.
And do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, and then we can now open it to the floor for...
You want to go ahead and vote on that?
Vote, okay, yes. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, I guess I can too. Any, is there any opposition, any note? Okay, we, that's the vote. It's unanimous. Now I'm looking at the procedure here again, which the staff was very helpful with us to make sure we go through this correctly. Now each, hold on. I'm sorry, I'm just looking down the list.
And if you want to...
Go ahead.
Sorry about that, I was just gonna say that you can amend that motion to, or, I'm sorry, you can amend these rules slightly where you don't need a motion to open the floor for nominations as the chairman, if you just want to announce that they're open for, or, I'm sorry, that the floor is open for nominations for vice chairman, then it will suffice. And then just a motion at the end for sure, where you all guys vote on the vice chair.
Okay, thank you for making that clear. Since, since I am now the chairman officially, are there any nominations for vice chairman?
Well, I would nominate Brittany, I mean, I, this is only my second meeting and I'm not sure how much experience there is otherwise that, for a vice. So I'm gonna nominate her.
Okay. Is there a second? Very good, we have a second. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Brittany Guzman will be the vice chairperson.
All right, thank you.
Great, thank you, appreciate it. Okay, and let me, am I saying that right, Brittany? It is, it's, Guzman is how we say the last name.
Yeah, it's Guzman.
Okay, just like it's spelled.
Little twist on, on what you conventionally heard.
Okay, well, good, just to make sure, just to have that clear since we'll be seeing your name. Now, that concludes item two on the agenda. So we can move on to item three. Okay. Consideration and possible action regarding historic preservation ordinance compliance for graphics of a mobile food trailer for Texas Twist and Shakes LLC located at the northeast corner of Liberty and Caroline Streets.
And commissioners, you may remember seeing the site plan and some of the site furnishings last time and speaking with the, with the property owner. I mistakenly felt like the graphics on the trailer were part of a vehicle and didn't need to be, you know, under the purview of the historic ordinance. But after further dialogue internally and checking with the city attorney, he said that absolutely it would be something that, you know, would fall within the purview of the historic ordinance, or he believes there's a strong enough case to be made that it does, that you guys should look at and review the graphics of the trailer for, I guess, suitability with historic district ordinance. The ordinance itself in terms of criteria, there's, it really doesn't, you know, contemplate moving vehicles very much or, you know, kind of mobile food trailers, you know, semi-mobile food trailers. It, you know, contemplates architecture. So with that, I'll turn it over to you guys. If you have any thoughts or questions, I'll be happy to address them.
Is the criteria for meeting historical? I mean, we already have a snowball and they serve, you know, snow cones. And now we're gonna have an ice cream truck there. I mean, it looks like an ice cream food truck to me, right? And it's got a cow on it, some ice cream, a little bit of guy in back with your ice cream cone. What, what is it that, that as a planning and zoning commission, what is it exactly that? I mean, I see where it says it's got the Texas flag and, you know, God bless Texas. And I don't know what side of the street that's gonna be facing. It's gonna face the same way every single time it's set up. I see that it's got like a Japanese maple on the backside of it with a little Yoki bear on it. There's the Texas flag in front. I mean, is there a criteria? I mean, is it supposed to be rustic? Is it supposed to be, you know, what is it that we're supposed to be thinking?
Yeah, exactly, yeah, and that's a good question.
I think it is, you know, to me, and I'll read you just one piece of the...
I tried to figure out by reading, you know, what, what was supposed to be going or guidelines. And I was like, I, as far as I can see, you know, the signs and stuff like that. But I don't know where it, I mean, it's cute, but I don't know if it's...
Well, yeah, and I think, let me just add, to give you a quick background, and David, Dave can elaborate on this, but appreciate your guidance, David, as staff. It sounds to me like, from what Dave was just saying is, yes, we do want to look at the food truck itself as the sign. And Mr. Culliver, your head, mentioned that originally, that he didn't intend to put any other signs up because, and we can confirm that with him if, is he on tonight?
Yeah, and he is not, or Jeff.
All right, well, let me just say this, that, yes, he did, he did say that this would be his sign and he had mentioned the mural facing the main street. So the mural with the Texas blue bonnets and the oak, the tree would be facing the street. Now, I guess my main thing to try to keep perspective is, we have certain guidelines and I'll go just list it real quick on the signage to help you. We typically say the sign has got to be no more than 60% of the side of the building. You know, you don't want to be overpowering. But we look at the size, we look at the height, we look at the lighting, obviously at night. The lighting, we do have guidelines on that. It's basically a downlighting as opposed to an uplighting and certainly needs to be bright enough to read it at night, but we don't want anything that's overly bright. And we have, we have all the specifications on that, the staff.
Because I see that it has an extending awning, which leads me to believe that when it's extended, it might possibly have light on it. But what, is there hours that this, this food truck or food ice cream business is going to be open? Because when you mentioned lighting, you know, with changing of the TV, I mean, is there lights out the back, up the front, outside? And, I mean, because it's a one-stop shopping, it's a building and a sign. And something about light that I wrote, you know, read in our specification. You know, I mean, and it's all in agreement with this, with this person who's pointing, putting it out there. But I'm trying to see light on it. I mean, I see trailer light, but I don't see any light that if you flip the switch from the inside, if there's light from the outside. So that needs to be, possibly, it's not gonna be a nighttime usage.
I think it would depend on the time, I think it would really depend on the time of year and, you know, obviously. The impression I got was that when he's open for business, the, the sides will be up, the side with the snow cones, the doors will be up and the lights will be on inside the trailer.
So no extending poles or any futuristic tripod that stand up that have the shining lights down?
Right, yeah, I know, he mentioned, he mentioned trying to keep it simple, tying into the power line for power to the trailer itself. But these are things we, we definitely will need to stipulate as we go down the road. You know, just to really be sure on lighting. But to finish my thought, just so you know, especially the two new people that haven't really, this is all brand new to you, I know. We get a lot of good guidance through the staff, but it's on the signs, it's size, it's brightness, lighting. Colors play into it somewhat. You know, it's, we also have in the audience, one paragraph in the audience talks about the creativity of a small business, that all small businesses need to be able to, allowed to be creative, certainly, and try to have a sign that, that is in keeping with what it is they're selling. So I would keep that in mind. It's also, you know, the overall look. Here, you know, we've got on this, on the trailer, I think if we're looking at just the trailer as the sign, one question I would have from, and we saw this on the diagram, was the square footage and the linear, linear footage of the parking lot itself. Because we, in this case, we, we are looking at the parking lot and then the sign as, the trailer as a percentage of the size. So I, I think we're well under the 60% as far as that goes, if you look at the proportions.
If I could just ask a quick question, because I can't remember. Did he want to leave it parked all the time? Or he's saying, I'm just gonna be bringing it in for the weekends or when he has the hours?
That's what I'm asking too, yeah.
Yeah, good question. And he, he said it's classified as mobile, of course, because you can move it and there's nothing permanent. And that was where we went with that, with the, with the plating. But the intention was to occasionally move it, but in general, it would be there all the time. So that, that it's, I guess it's a semi, semi-permanent.
But is it considered, I understand you're giving me the guidelines and I, and I read the guidelines for signage and stuff.
Okay.
And I looked at his plan because you said yes, that I could be on the commission and then I read everything, but is, is, is this constitute? I mean, I know that it's semi-permanent, is it a, is it a building or is it a sign? And, and is there a differentiation between that? Because once you say yes to this, then there's other parking lots in Montgomery. I'm not saying it's bad, I'm not saying it's good, I'm just saying, we're gonna do this, right? If you decide to do this, then the next person's gonna be looking and going, well, you considered it a sign, not a building, and I'm gonna move it this weekend. Well, the lighting wasn't right, but the tripod, and now I've got floodlights. That's all I'm here, I mean, it's a good idea, people like ice cream. I'm just, if we're...
Sure, you know, yeah, that's a good, all good questions. And as, we are kind of blazing new territory here. This is kind of a first. I think it's important to look at the future where we, it looks like Mr. Tiedem is gonna be doing the food truck park up on 105. And, you know, and that's, for us to be familiar with anything to do with food trucks, it does appear that food trucks are not just a trend. They've been around quite a while now. We do have the Maine lobster on a regular basis over there on Klepper Street, which you did park in Jim's Hardware Parking Lot and they seem to think it works better when they park on the Klepper right there by the community center, which technically is in the historic district. We haven't had any complaints about that.
But shouldn't we sit from present view? And this is our example. So if someone does want to do food truck later, like the lobster or the Brazilian thing that goes up there beside the snow cone plate, you know, let's ju, I'm just suggesting that we think through this carefully because this is like in a parking lot, and I've been here, I've lived here many years, that we have festivals and we have other things that we do throughout the weekend that last a whole long time and it's gonna be sitting there. We just gotta remember that, you know, the wine festival lasts till night. It's gonna want to try fire with lights shining down. I'm just trying to think through the thing that, you know, is he gonna put a pole and extend? Not Christmas lights, but you know how people put the lights out at their arbors or something? You know, I'm just, I'm not, I mean, ice cream's great, it looks like a pretty design on there and all that. But once we step in this, into this, moving forward, everyone's gonna use this as an example. So I know I'm new, it's my first meeting. I just have a lot of questions.
Well, to getting back to your, to the main question is, do we consider it a sign or do we consider it a building? And in my mind, and we need to discuss this as a group, but in my mind, I look at the parking lot as being the total, let's call it building. And then this is the sign that's within the building. Now, I will admit, I'll just put it right out there now. At first, I thought it was too busy, there's a lot going on there. But I've had a few days to think about it and, and I just want to say, again, this is just my opinion. It's got the Texas flag, it's got the bear for the root beer. You know, it's got ice cream cones, it's got a cow and it has dairy product. And all, to, to me, that's all wholesome and it's family oriented. And you got an oak tree and a sunset.
I agree with the designers.
Yeah, and, and just to put in perspective, we have approved numerous other, there was the Small Town Sugar. They did pink and kind of a pretty minty aqua green or, you know, it was pretty, it was pretty colorful. And, but it worked. It's, I mean, that's what you expect when you see ice cream and desserts and it's fun. We see people taking pictures in front of the Cozy Grape mural. That's become kind of a focal point, they like that. Even Jacob's property, they have a large mural on their wall, which is due for some upgrading. But people, you know, if this thing really became popular, I could see where it would blend in. Well, let me just put it this way. He wants to do planters around it with some seating and tables with a roped off area. So I think in my mind, that would soften the look somewhat because now you've got, the, the trailer is the sign and then you've got kind of a city, a sitting area. So keep that in mind too, because he did show us that on the drawing. I'm sorry he's not here tonight, because we could ask him these questions a little more detail. But I just wanted to throw that out there because in the past, there's numerous signs we have approved that have got, that are quite colorful. And, you know, if you look at this size-wise compared to the parking lot area, it's all within percentages. The big question, and you just brought this up, is it really the, you know, permanent versus mobile? And what are the, what are the implications there? But we've already gone through that partly, that went to city council too. And so David, you might have some input on that.
Save a little more time, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Dave. Well, just that, we may want to visit what we established already through the last P&amp;Z and that, and then the city council. As far as permanent versus mobile.
In terms of the side improvements he's making, he's asking for water and sewer caps. But again, he's not changing the, and, and so what he had gone, you know, what he had asked the city for was basically a variance last time, or, or, you know, last month, so he wouldn't have to go through the plating, you know, process. And because he says, well, you know, the ordinance says that you can't get caps unless you plat. And it's like, well, are, you know, is just getting caps, you know, development? And so again, you know, what's, what's existing is going to remain existing there on the site. I'll circle back to your point on the lighting though. Any lighting that he decided that he would want to put up would come back to P&amp;Z because it's a change to, you know, the, I guess, the site furnishings of...
Exactly, in addition too, because he had talked about, you know, the lighting with inside the, when it's open for business.
So our city sign official, would they be monitoring his, his mobile, not permanent sign? Is that who would, who would drop by and say, you know, this is not within what we're supposed to be doing for a sign? Is that who would, whoever that is?
Yeah, I think, you know, if anything, he, you know, if he were to change anything on the, you know, you know, on the graphics, and that would obviously be something different than what was...
Well, who is our city sign official?
Ultimately, it all falls to the city administrator right now, you know, with the way that, you know, city...
I mean, drop around and check everything.
Yeah, that's, and that's a good point. As a matter of fact, we'll be discussing that later on. That's the last item on the agenda. But yes, as far as that goes, what we would be looking at tonight is simply approving the trailer itself. So then we would know that that is, we've already got all the pictures of that, we know what it looks like. So we would simply be approving that look as a sign. If anything was ever to be added or changed or lighting changed, that would be addressed.
Thank you, you've addressed all my concerns and questions that I have.
And, and I didn't, I don't mean to get off track with the permanent versus mobile, but it is the nature of, of the thing where he has mentioned, he has discussed this with the Tom Cronin and then that somehow they might have a way that they work things, you know, that's between them though, as far as when he's gonna be opening. We really can't get into that. So, you know, that's, those are things that will evolve. And let me just, I'll add one more thing and then I think we can have more discussion. And again, I'm just trying to give a little bit of insight on the history. We love the historic aspect of Montgomery. The reality is, a lot of it has to do with the historic house, homes, the residence. Those are so well-preserved. When you're talking about this downtown, we have a few key buildings, yes. We've got the bank building, we've got a few core buildings that are historic. But you have to keep in mind, we also have a lot of stuff that's not historic. It's a mix. A lot of those buildings were steel buildings, they're prefabbed, they were done in the 50s and the 60s. Uh, just in the last couple of years, we've had, uh, three or four of the tiny homes have been brought in. And, you know, everybody felt like that was fine. Uh, in other words, there is a mix and it's not like it's all truly what you'd call historic buildings. And so, you know, we're not trying to be, uh, Pittsburgh. We're not, how can I say that? We're not trying to be, uh, Vail, Colorado with all its regulations. We're not even trying to be the Woodlands, uh, with all of its regulations, uh, from Market Street. Uh, I think a lot of people move here because we like, it's the simplicity of it and it's, it's not overly regulated. Uh, and they like some diversity and they like, you know, people come, small businesses want to, want to open up and give it a go. So, uh, I only try to put that in perspective because we don't really have, never really have had a real problem with, with new construction. Uh, you know, it, it's just, there's varying, various things that we have to prove that look okay. But it's not like we've got one set exact, some, one design either because of the mix in downtown. But we love the history and, and the buildings that truly are historic. Uh, some of the other ones have fallen down and, and come apart and were poorly built and it was time to move on. So with that said, uh, is there any other ideas we might want to talk about with this simply as a sign? And how it looks as a sign?
I'll just add Jeff, Bill just got on, on the, uh, meeting. If you guys have any questions for him, uh, he's on the line now.
Oh, good. You said that is Mr. Clevenger?
Yes, sir.
Oh, good. Okay, thank you. Appreciate you being here. We always like to see participation and it helps for good communication.
Yes, sir.
So I don't know if you caught any of that, Bill, Mr. Clevenger, but, uh, we were talking about electrical, you had mentioned electrical hookups and your lighting, when you're open for business, is the lighting going to be, uh, what's inside the trailer basically that it's? Cause you know, we do have lighting regulations. Everything's supposed to be fairly down lighting and, and not overly, overly bright. So what are your thoughts on, on the lighting?
Uh, the, the lighting definitely would be in from the trailer. Any exterior lighting, uh, I would, uh, at this time would kind of defer and wait till we get closer. And then I'll, uh, submit a, a design. I don't think it's going to be overly much because the parking lot's pretty lit as we speak. But, uh, granted, it would be, uh, subtle and, uh, more of a, give it like a saffron glow per se.
Exactly. Yeah. We do like to lean towards soft lighting. The only real issues we've had, just so you know, is usually if it's a flood or a spot that's shining in the up, uh, up direction is, is not good. It's, it'd be dangerous for, uh, driving.
Oh, no, we wouldn't have anything pointed towards the streets.
Yeah. So those are the kind of things you want to keep in mind. The city does have all the information, all the specs on illumination and, and, but most sign people, anybody in the business, they know what's, what's normal, let's say what's normal.
All our lighting, I can tell you this much, would be encompassed right around the trailer and, and the lot itself. There would be nothing protruding, uh, outside of the, the boundaries.
Okay. And, uh, to work in with that and to look at the trailer, the food truck as a, as a sign, which you've mentioned, uh, it sounds like that would be the primary, that would be the, the way to, to let people know what the product is. What are the overall, just basic dimensions of the parking lot? Linear square footage or linear? Uh, where I'm getting, what I'm getting at is the sign ordinance, we want to make sure that all signs are no more than sixty percent of the overall size of the building. And in this case, I, I think we have to consider the parking lot, the building, if you will. In other words, just if you're looking at Cozy Grape, that he's got that mural on the wall that is probably right about at sixty percent. Uh, it seems to me like you'd be well within that percentage.
Yes, sir. I'll to honestly tell you, uh, sitting here, I'd have to run across the house and grab the, the dimensions. Unless Dave, you can calculate that real quick. But based on the size of the trailer and the double lot that it would encompass, I know we would be well in underneath the sixty percent.
The parking lot on the, at least on the MCAD information that I have in front of me, looks to be, eighty-eight feet by about ninety feet-ish, so roughly a square, about ninety. Or ninety. And the trailer again, Bill, is twenty feet long, is that?
It's, uh, eighteen with a two-foot step.
Gotcha.
Um, Mr. Clevenger?
Yes, ma'am.
It's my first meeting, uh, to actually attend, but the, the reason I brought up the question was, um, although we have occasional food trucks in Montgomery, downtown Montgomery, uh, and now we're going to have some more food trucks down on 105. My questions were brought up because this seems to be, uh, setting a precedent of what we're going to do in downtown Montgomery. And it's not the graphics on the trailer at all. I mean, it's quite attractive. Um, I was just asking for, like, once we, once we say, hey, yeah, this is good and it's diverse and yeah, it's worth, um, it's the attitude that might come along due to weather or lighting or season changes or, you know, wine festival, first Saturdays, you know, the long summer nights or whatever, that it's setting the precedent for, uh, anyone else that might be interested in doing this. That was my only question was, is this considered a sign or a building? And Jeff made it very plain that this is a sign and your parking, parking lot would be considered the building. And yet by the dimensions, it shows that it's no more than sixty percent of the building. So that's why this is the questions I have, um, and about the lighting and stuff like that. But, I mean, you'll be setting the precedent. You know what I'm saying? Your, your business, your, your mobile food truck will be setting the precedent for any interesting that you can have. But as far as approval of the graphics, I mean, I'm only one person, but I personally like the graphics on the, on the movie.
Well, thank you very much. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. I, I was just going to say, Ms. Walker, first, thank you for, uh, uh, you know, liking, uh, the design. I mean, we worked very hard in trying to come up with something that would be very respectful and tasteful for our community. And then on top of that, uh, by being the one to set the precedent, I look forward to working with each and every one of you, uh, the city council and, and, you know, just community members, other business, uh, uh, members and, and owners to, you know, keep that precedent very high and, and, and hopefully set the bar going forward. And, and, you know, like I said, we're going to do everything very clean, very professional and, uh, try to make everyone proud.
And let me just add, Mr. Clevenger, that, uh, Ms. Walker also, just before you came on, she was asking about, uh, a couple of things. What do you foresee as your hours of operation? And, uh, well, when are you looking at trying to get this thing going?
Well,
I mean, just to give us a, just to give us a feel for what, I, I realize this is kind of blazing new territory. Uh, but, you know, short term, long term, uh, if you could just give us a feel for your, you know, the hours, uh, nighttime, daytime?
Uh, tentatively, we'd like to be open somewhere between the ten AM and eleven AM hour, uh, during the days. Um, probably a little earlier, uh, towards the ten, uh, on Saturdays. Granted, you know, spring, fall, summer hours would change in the evenings, but we do want to try to come up with a consistent, uh, set of hours so that people can, you know, basically bank on that, that they know, hey, I'm on my way home and I want to grab an ice cream cone or something. So, uh, you know, we're blessed for many reasons down here in Texas. But, uh, one, we have long evenings and, and lots of sun. So, uh, you know, as we grow, as we get into the summer, uh, hours, I would like to be open at least till nine. Um, just because it's cool and people are walking and, you know, why not enjoy an ice cream cone or a root beer float?
Uh, let me just say this, you, you had mentioned that earlier too. And I think that's a very strong point of trying to establish set hours that are consistent, where people can bank on it being there. Because, you know, there's nothing worse than going down there and it's, oh, they're closed, you know? So those kinds of things, I mean, I, and I, I'm not a business person, but I, I think you, those are the kinds of things that, that sound, uh, positive. And the, the reason I bring that up is there've been a few others that have tried to do an ice cream shop. Uh, we certainly can use, it'd be great to have one. We don't have a Dairy Queen. Uh, so, you know, whatever, whatever it takes, but it's been tried in the past of, uh, I, I think you, it sounds to me like you're considering all the, uh, important parts of it.
Well, yeah, um, you know, one is, uh, the fact that we're, we know we're going to be a standalone, but we're also going to be complimentary to our, our neighbors right around us. You know, as we've talked to, uh, you know, uh, the owners of the Cozy Grape and, and different things that, you know, hey, when they come out out from having a nice dinner, you know, they can, uh, grab dessert on, on, to go or to sit there and enjoy it. Um, we're also going to, I mean, I know we'll play compliment to the new, uh, wings over Montgomery and just the overall downtown feel of, you know, what, what better way to enjoy our, uh, beautiful historic Montgomery downtown than walking around and enjoying it with an ice cream cone? But, uh, but beyond that, to answer your question, Mr. Waddell, uh, as far as opening, I'm working with a couple of different engineering firms to see which one I get the best bang for the buck. In laying out what we've previously discussed in the water and sewer lines. As far as, uh, the operation itself, I mean, really, uh, there's not much time for us to get what we need done right away. But just like I said, I want to do everything, uh, very clean and professional, so I'm not going to rush things. When you rush, things seem to, you know, you leave yourself open for, uh, mistakes or, or error. So I'd rather just take our time in getting the trailer where we exactly want it, which is up there, you know, where we've told you. But have it set, have the engineers come in, um, utilizing the, the professionals, uh, you know, as far as the, um, the plumbing company and, and everything and getting all that work done and then getting it covered all back up and grassed and, and just laid out. And then we'll, uh, you know, once that's all done, we'll invite everybody to come take a look and, and, you know, have a, a look see of how that is. And then we'll just keep you all informed step by step as we get ready to open up in 2021.
Well, thank you for the thoughtful answer. And, and again, I think you answered everything Ms. Walker was asked, wondering, uh, is, is interesting how you're looking, it sounds like you're definitely think you can go 12 months a year. And as you said, that this climate, I, I think is conducive to, even though it's ice cream and floats, it, it sounds like you're, you're really planning on this being 12 months a year.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. It's, it's kind of, I know this is going to sound weird, but if you look at the studies and stuff, you actually sell more ice cream in cooler weather than you do downright hot weather. So in, uh, days of seventies and eighties, we'll sell a whole lot more ice cream than we will in the ninety plus. Because let's face it, you grab an ice cream cone, you'll be melted on your hand before you even get back to the car. So, yeah.
Okay. Well, my last question is, is how, how's it tasted? Is it, is the, is the quality, uh, I, I, I hope you've checked out the quality.
Quality is very good. I, I'm happy to announce, uh, that we will be partnering with a dairy that, uh, has celebrated in 2020 their eightieth anniversary. So they know exactly what they're doing. And we're happy to partner with them and, and share those, uh, that sweet treat to, uh, the folks of Montgomery and, and the surrounding area.
Very good. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
We want to make a motion to approve the graphics of that sign. Is that where we're at right now?
Yes. Uh, let me just make sure.
I actually had a, a quick question, um, more for Dave. I guess, did the attorney, um, speak to where or why he thought that? I mean, I know in the beginning of, of, of this, uh, agenda item, we talked about it a little bit. But I guess my question is specifically with where in the sign code? Or, uh, as I'm looking at it, it's attached to our, um, agenda. I guess what, what exactly was he worried about that we needed to, um, you know, consider this a sign? I guess, and, and to add to that, is there a difference between a sign and a mural?
Gotcha, sure. Um, I think both, you know, for, for what we're, you know, looking at here and, you know, kind of just to, you know, to walk back just real quick on the signs is, you know, so, you know, kind of whether it's an architectural improvement or, or a sign, um, the reason that those come to P and Z is because you guys are looking at, uh, the cohesiveness of the historic district, which is a pretty broad umbrella. And again, I've got it here for, just one second here to, I'm going to refer to the design guide, the historic district, uh, guidelines. Were actually those aren't the ones I was thinking. But essentially the, there's nothing specifically, you know, that would deal with this either in the sign ordinance or, um, in the historic, uh, preservation ordinance as a, you know, this specific use needs to meet these specific criteria. I think it's rather just a, you know, general, you know, fit and cohesiveness with the character of the historic district because you're, this is an element that is visible from a public right of way. So I think he's probably leaning with a pretty broad brush.
And, and, um, to further go on that point, so at Jim's Harbor, you said the, um, lobster food truck is there from time to time. I mean, did they seek approval for that? I guess what's the precedent on all of that?
Right. Uh, I think this is really, I think this is a first, you know, for us and, you know, to, you know, to kind of echo what, you know, Jeff said earlier. And, you know, a lot of it is because, you know, this notion of, you know, mobile food, um, operations are somewhat new. Um, you know, certainly to our area, but, you know, like you say, you know, they've been around for, you know, a number of years, just kind of new to us. And the idea of having one on a, you know, more regular basis than, you know, the current ones are, are kind of where we're, you know, I, I guess kind of wrestling with how to, you know, interpret our code, um, as it relates to, you know, something like this.
Gotcha. So it's just discretionary, like what we find fit. And I, I, I guess what I'm, I don't know, my, my, what I'm trying to reconcile is if we haven't asked for approval for other food trucks, I mean, Jim's Harbor just, I mean, not even a block, a half a block away, you know? And they never had to have any approval for that. And I understand that this is going to be more quote unquote permanent, but at the same time, it is on wheels and it could be moved at any time technically. Um, I guess I don't see a reason why there, we should not, I guess, we would not approve it. It's where I'm at. I don't know what other people think.
Well, that's, I think that's so good to, it, that was part of the reason for discussion. It's just to get ideas and thoughts on it. Uh, we are blazing kind of a new territory there. So certainly there's always, there's always going to be some, some, uh, discussion. I think, I will say, Mr. Clevenger did mention that would be moved every so often. There may, there, and I can't remember right now, there may be some rules about you move it every so often.
No, sir. I, I, I won't be moving it. It, it's going to be more of a fixed because hence the reason why I'm utilizing and going through the process of getting the water in the sewer and then having, you know, the direct electrical. Because, uh, a generator, which it's a Because a generator, which it's equipped with a generator, won't power, it won't be a sufficient constant power source for the soft serve machines. So to preserve the longevity of the machines and even the generator itself, that's why I got to have the direct connect. And then I just thought it would make it more cleaner and just less hassle of, you know, I mean, I invested in a, in a property that has access to the town water and sewer. And as we've previously discussed, I'm not cooking anything or frying anything. I'm not even really using that much water at all. But just to have that nice, clean service, no, you know, just not having the, you know, move it from period time to time. And going back to what you said, hey, this is going to, you know, we're looking to set the precedent of having an establishment there, you know, at, it's there to be open, people know it's there. It's going to be a staple of the community and the area. Then that's why I'm going through that whole process.
Okay. Yes. And then those are things, for those that weren't there at the, you did touch on that. And that was, our original concern was, you know, not to look like an RV park where it's like a temporary hookup. And so you have covered that and appreciate that. That's, I just didn't know if there was some rule about moving every so often that was discussed at one time.
I think that's why I brought it up earlier, you know, setting the precedent. Because there are the food trucks that not go there and they park temporarily and then leave. And if he parks permanently there, we're discussing, and not if, he's going to. But we discuss that the trailer is a sign and the parking lot is built. So it is a permanent sign that will fall, fall under the mind of our sign ordinance, if anything needs changed, whatever, up to all that stuff.
Yeah.
At Jim's Hardware that comes and goes, that's a separate issue. And do we have something to cover food trucks? Not at this meeting, I understand. But for today, we are discussing graphics. If it's approved because it's historical district and we're planning zoning, that this thing is going to be permanent, it's considered a sign. You know what can't be done? If there's additional light, we're going to address that. I think the issue of the food truck that's coming and going in other places may be something that comes up later in addressing thing. But right now, Mr. Clevinger is setting the precedent for something that is moving forward, going to be very apparent in our city is food truck. You know, I would like to move to, that's his graphic on the building. And maybe at a later date, we discuss other food trucks that are traveling through and parking for the weekend or the day or whatever, maybe something else that we have to cover. But right now, we're discussing the graphics. And I personally like the graphics for downtown Montgomery. So if there's a motion to approve the graphics, I'm, I'm asking for that motion to approve the graphics of that.
Well, I appreciate, yes, I think you, you hit the nail on the head. That, we're, we're at that point where we understand what we're talking about. And let me just add for the discussion, and then one of you can make the motion officially. Keep in mind that Mr. Clevinger does own the property. As a, as the owner, it's, it's a little different scenario than if he was just, you know, their part leasing out or maybe for a short time. Just like it might, that may be what happens in the, in the future with the other part. But just, just making that point for the, those of you that are new, that he, he does own the property, so. Just point of interest. Okay, so if we could get a motion.
I think Ms. Walker made that motion, so I understood her, right?
Yeah, and I will second that motion. I, I, I like the graphics as well. I think they look very nice.
Okay, we, we have a motion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Are there any opposed? It's unanimous. The motion passes.
Well, thank you all, and I hope you all have a great evening and a, and a great rest of the week. And I look forward to working with you here in the near future.
Well, thank you, Mr. Clevinger. We appreciate you attending. Try to be a little on time next time, please.
Yes, sir.
You were probably busy getting it ready. But no, seriously though, we appreciate you, the comments, and best of luck with your adventure.
Thank you so much. Take care.
You too. Okay, thank you. Good discussion. We'll move on to item number four. And Dave, as far as you know, these owners are not present online?
No, sir. They're not on the call. And again, that was, you know, my oversight with the Thanksgiving holiday, getting in, they're plugged into the meetings.
Well, as I mentioned, we have good detail on the signage. So if you all can pull that up on your tablet. I'm assuming the new people have all the information. Okay. We've got consideration and possible action regarding two proposed wall signs for Six Shooter Junction Boutique and Jessica's Fine Jewelry located at fourteen three four eight Liberty Street in the Historic Preservation District.
Commissioners, you have the sign application. And just to plug it in a little bit, you know, closer, as I think I said there, you know, this is next to the Cozy Grape. In downtown, there used to be Small Town Sugar and has been vacant for a while. And this appears to be a, you know, sort of a dual business venture and that's going to occupy the same space.
Okay. And I'm sure everybody can see the design permit application. It looks like the sign is four foot by five foot. The width is five feet. So it looks like we're well within the sixty percent. The only thing I'm not seeing is we, we don't have a photo that he shows that the overall size of the building is with the sign, with the sign placement on the building.
And it says building, sign, both sides, so there'll be two signs? Is that what they're saying?
That's right. They have frontage on, on one forty-nine and on the McCallum Street side. So there'll be a sign above each door.
The same sign would be on front and back, the four by five?
Yes, ma'am.
And you're asking where it's located, Jeff? Where they're placing on the building?
Right. You know, when I looked at, you know, looked at a Google map image there to kind of, you know, plug myself in and, you know, there's really kind of just above the, just above the front awning, looks to me is where the old sign was. And probably about the only space that they've got a four foot by five foot areas just above the awning, there's a second story on the building.
I happen to actually shop at Six Shooter over in Magnolia. And everything she's ever done is professional and upkeep and signs and order. And I've, I've seen her there for years. And I don't see, I mean, I don't see where this would be. I don't know the jewelry. I happen to know it's a six shooter. But unless there's a, unless there's a city ordinance about where it's placed, I know there was an ordinance about the height off of the building. And I'm not quite sure above that awning, is it going to go above the building? Or is it still within above the awning on the building?
Right. That's, you know, the, the point that I would make, you know, to them, you know, when we issued the permit, if you guys approved it, would be, you know, just to point out that the ordinance does not allow it to exceed the height of the building or to extend up above, you know, the building, you know, beyond, I think it's twenty-four inches.
Yeah. And, and like you say, they, it's probably going to go pretty close to where the other one is already. The only thing I'll add to that is we just typically, when we do see a picture of it, it gives us perspective for percentage, you know, again, of the, within the sixty percent. But from what I'm thinking about that building, it looks like that size would be well within the sixty percent. It's four foot by five. I'm, I'm just, I guess if we, when we make the motion, we could put the contingency in there that, Dave, you can confirm that placement and?
Right. That it meets all the criteria of, you know, the sign ordinance with regard to placement.
Let's talk, let's just talk about, do we, you know, agree the, the sign itself, the design, the colors, how do we feel about that? I think it looks good.
Well, for me, I don't, I don't know if it really conforms like the rest of the signs downtown. I haven't seen anyone else, any other owners putting their pictures up.
That's my only thing.
That's, that's true. That's a good point.
I just don't want it to be distracting and not fit in with the historic district, the way the others have done theirs.
And it is, that is correct. I've seen signs in this town for years. I've never seen anyone, their personal face on anything that's advertising you place of business.
Yeah, more traditional, classic.
Yes. I mean, I see the Six Shooter with the gun on it, that turned, I've seen that logo before, but I've never seen the, I mean, the jewelry with the two jewels. I mean, tells you it's jewelry.
Let me ask, let me ask you, I went by there a couple of days ago and on the backside, there is, there's a sign, a six shooter, very similar to this. But I don't really remember exactly what, what the detail was. Do you remember on the back?
I don't remember.
There's a porch railing there and they've got a, it's, it's kind of like this, but it's probably not as detailed.
I've never seen on either one of her locations in Hempstead or Magnolia, her picture on there. I've always seen the Six Shooter Boutique. And I've, in, I've, I've never seen Jessica Fine Jewelry before. Of course, it's a new picture, but. You know, I'm all about setting precedent in Montgomery. So once we open the door and they cross the threshold, is this what we're going to be looking at every time a new business comes in? Jim's Hardware does not have Jim's face on it. You know, Rancher's Daughter does not have the owner on there. Cozy Grape doesn't, you know, the wings, the place that sells wings.
I agree.
Are we following along a general consensus that we're not putting faces to the names of businesses? Or is that something?
Well, I. I don't, I'm, it's a, I'm sure that's a very nice picture. It's just that I don't, I don't think it conforms with the other signs. And there is portions, and I guess it was the 2015 amendment, that say that you need to have a sense of order through standardization.
Yeah.
And so that's the point I was making as far as this is the first time you'll see like a, a full person on a sign.
Yeah.
Yes. I know, I, I can, it's a good point and I'm kind of, I'm on the fence. It's kind of a, it's a caricature, but it's very real. I wonder, did, did Dave, did they mention if they've actually made the sign yet?
They did, and also I've not spoken with them personally.
It's a neat, I, I like the, the idea, but the, but the faces themselves and the bodies are, yeah. I, I mean, it's, it's a caricature, but it's pretty real. Is that, am I saying that right?
Well, do you believe that it enhances the overall appearance and economic value of the landscape in preserving the unique natural environment? Or that this one is separate from the others?
I believe this one's separate from others. That's my opinion, all bummer stuff. I don't think it follows the standardization of what's already in our downtown. And if we, like I said, if you, if you open the door, people are going to walk through it.
Yeah. Specifically because the, the, the actual faces are very, I guess, very similar to the actual person, right? Yeah. Yeah. I see that.
Yeah, I, Maryam, I, that was one of my questions that I was going to ask you is at her other locations, did she have this, this imagery or whatever? I, I do not, personally, I don't care for it. And I, I like, I don't agree that it is cohesive and adds to the downtown character. I mean, and I don't even know if, if it was more, you know, caricature-like, less realistic in terms of like their faces. I don't even think that that would jive just because of the size of, of the people. And I honestly, in no signs that I've seen downtown have any caricatures or any, I guess, persons been represented. And I just, I like the graphics at the bottom, in the lower half of the, of the, of the sign. But I'm not, I, I don't, I don't care and I don't appreciate the top part.
And, and if you look at it, because that's what I'm doing, the scroll back forth to my computer. It's half and half. Like there. It's half and half. And if you look at the sign, what are you going to, what are you going to, what, is it going to bring people to downtown to go to the boutique and buy jewelry? That's what we're, right?
Yeah, I, I must.
It doesn't add value to what it is you're advertising to what it is that you're trying to bring to, to our town. As far as, I personally buy the clothes from Six Shooter Boutique and they are outstanding in their good quality flow. Personally, I don't think the character graphics need to be on the signs.
Well, let me just say this, that you've have, y'all have opened my eyes a little more. I, you know, now that I'm really considering that, you're, you're absolutely right. I agree. This could set a precedent. And it's, it's just not quite the character. One thing I would like to do is, Dave, maybe when you talk to these people, depending on our motion, whatever the, the one they've got now on the back, it's kind of weathered, but I, I think it was kind of like this, but it wasn't, it wasn't anything quite like this. So, you know, that's just something to maybe look at when we talk to them to say, you know, we need to compare and say, where do we draw the line? And I'm sorry, I just don't, I can't remember exactly what the, the old one looked like, but it, it wasn't quite like this.
No, and I, I bet you it's her six shooter sign, sign from her other store possibly. I'm, is it okay if I look it up on the internet?
Sure.
I mean, my mind is like, like I need to have a refresher.
Well, yeah, in, in a nutshell, I agree. I, I think the top half is just a little too, too much.
Yeah, it's, it's always the gun and the word boutique. It's six shooter with the gun and the boutique. It's not a, doesn't have a character on it. Character cartoon.
Okay. Well, good discussion. Sounds like we're getting kind of close to making a decision here.
You know, you know what it has on it? It has a cowgirl straddling the six, the, the word shooter. And, 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 it's like an Annie Oakley from an old western movie is what you saw on her sign.
More of a generic look.
Yeah, it, it's a woman.
Yeah.
And she's sitting on a saddle. But, you know, it's, it's a, you know, it's not them. It's not a personal person. But, you know, it's, it's a, you know, it's not them, it's not a personal, personal picture.
And the dress, the dressing, uh, the, the, the clothing is probably a little more standard.
Uh, it looks like Daisy Duke.
Yeah.
I'm just being honest.
Yeah, well, it, it probably, it may be exactly what, what's the old one that's down there now, yeah. So.
I can't, I didn't see the sign, so I can't speak to the truth of that, but I do know there is a gun and it does say Six Shooter and it does say boutique at the, at two places that I see.
And I'm not so sure that one got approved. The old, I mean, the one that's there now, I don't remember it.
I don't know anything about that one, Jeff.
Yeah, mine just got hung up. Well, yeah, because that would be probably just recently since, yeah, so maybe when they brought over a, a, an old one from the other place. Okay. Uh, any other comments? I think we've covered it pretty well, if anybody wants to make a motion. And we keep in mind if we need to, i- important to have good communication from us and from Dave to the owners, since they're not here. You know, and I know Dave would be very good about that. Just to let them know.
I move that we have Dave speak to the owners and come back and present. Is that the sign or, and have they already got it made? Or we're not really leaning towards approving the sign as it stands? I move that we have Dave talk to them.
Well, and I, I feel like even asking them if they have it already made, they could just say yes, if this is the sign they really want. But if they would take, you know, a drive around downtown and maybe get a feel of what, what would be better suited, that might give them some different ideas of what to take off or, or into, and what to enhance.
Yes. And, and in the long run, it's really in their best interest to be within what people would expect, uh, within certain parameters. Uh, so, yeah, and, and, uh, you know, that's a good point.
Miriam, if I can read this back to you to make sure I got it right, that we have a motion by Miriam to have staff discuss removing the characters from the sign?
Or reconsideration of the characters.
Yeah, especially being so.
If, if they want that, then it has to come to us and then we have to really take a vote. So we're giving them the opportunity to go, oh, you don't think it's in and we're going to go at this time, no, we don't think it's in, but yes. What you said, Dave, is correct.
Would it, so do you guys want to table, do you guys want to table this? Or do you want, I think either ways, I think you're not, you know, approving it or denying it. So then, I think the motion you have on the table is perfectly fine, but this is another alternative, you could table the action. But I think that this is probably more direct in terms of, you know, what the steps are, you know, between now and, you know, and you guys taking action, which is me talking with the owners.
Well, could we, I guess, could we just simply say like the application for a sign permit as submitted is denied? However, we're willing, you know, to work with you. And, and I guess if we're going to go with Miriam's motion, I would just like to add that the characters, it's just in terms of their scaling and the actual signage describing, you know, what the business is, is my issue.
Gotcha.
Yeah. And, and however we can, the word, I'm not sure what the word is, the part about looking, the face looking exact, you know, like the person, um, that's never, that's not something we want to start. I, I, I'm not sure how to say that. The likeness, the likeness of the owner. And, and not to get off track, but getting back to Miriam's point too, I, yes, I, I, you know, we want them to know that we have empathy, we're trying to work with them. But yeah, I guess it's, it's not to ask if they made it yet or not, it's, so I think we're at a good place. I think just what we've talked about, uh, as, as Brittany just said, and appreciate the comments on, from everybody.
So would it be fair, Miriam, to say that it's a motion to have staff discuss reconsidering the proportion of the characters in the sign?
Oh.
Or, yeah, style, proportion and style, or, go ahead.
Honestly, I don't think it does the, I don't think it does the city any justice or the business owners any justice as the sign stands now.
I agree.
That I, it just doesn't. If I was to drive by, I'd probably go in and talk to the owner and go, what were you thinking? If I wasn't on the planning and zoning, but I happen to know the owner and I didn't know this, I really didn't know, I didn't see the sign. I was like, oh, but, but it, it's, it's their own, it, it is their own design, it's their business, how they want to present it. Uh, I just don't think it fits within what we're trying to do in the city of Montgomery as standardized signs go and what everyone else is doing, even though it's being creative. We just look at an ice cream truck, you know what I'm saying? We, we want diversity, we want creativity, um, but I think that's opening a door that I prefer not to be open. I don't think doing business for Montgomery any justice would add to the sign standing now. I don't like the.
Miriam, can I ask, still looking at the, the graphics from, I think it's Magnolia store, I pulled it up online as well. I mean, would you be opposed to a sign like that in downtown Montgomery?
I don't know how she would put it in conjunction with the jewelry store, uh, but that's not her. And.
Right, yeah, I guess my question is, are you opposed in general to any charac- like caricatures or any characters or, I guess, personhood images being used?
Inside the store, if I was purchasing something, no. Out on a billboard, in where we are right now, yes.
That's on a main, that has a main view to drive by.
Yeah. It, it's just not, it's not appeasing. If we had looked at the ice cream truck and he had slapped, uh, you know, an ice cream cone on there and a one dip ice cream and said, Happy Go Lucky Ice Cream Trails, we would say, no, that's not conducive to what it is we need in our downtown.
Or his face.
Yeah. So, so.
I don't know how to address it, it's just.
Well.
If I drove to downtown Montgomery, I would go, why?
Yeah.
That's just my own.
I think the, the end result is what's important and, and maybe, maybe it is best just to make the motion where it's clearly denied, but we are very, you know, give a good, good reason to, to try to, uh, in other words, constructive criticism, uh, you know, we just try to say, we think this would work better if, if you just, uh, you know, make these modifications.
But Brittany caught up about looking at the one in Magnolia and it's a, it's a Daisy Duke sitting on a saddle on top of the word shooter, is that correct? Is that what you saw?
Yeah, that's the one I saw, yeah.
Yeah. But it's not the, it's not, it's sized differently. Is that a correct statement to say? Like the word shooter is bigger than the inanimate person that's sitting on that saddle.
Right, yeah, and I guess that's my, um, I guess, because what Dave, you know, when Dave's drafting the motion and he mentioned scaling of the character, my question to you was, does it matter the scaling? Are you just opposed to the character in general, character representation in general?
Personally, I, I, the sign does no, no, the sign that's currently that we're, they're asking for, the, in my opinion, living in downtown Montgomery and a business owner, I, it doesn't do a service to either one, the business and or the owners. Am I opposed to that character, that the one on Magnolia? It doesn't bother me that the scale is different. So, I don't have an answer for you, Brittany. I, I can't tell you.
Yeah, no, I, I, yeah, I, I, I get it. I just want to make sure that, um, that I'm in agreement with the overall motion, because I, I, my, I mean, I wouldn't want to deny, I mean, if it were to come before a sign similar to the one in Magnolia, I don't think that I would have good grounds to deny that personally, um, in my, my opinion. And so I just want to make sure that if I, you know, I'm supporting a motion, I just want to make sure that I'm supporting it fully in its full context.
The one in Magnolia doesn't, it doesn't strike me as this one does. Like literally, like I'm like, it, it misrepresentation, but, um, if you asked me to vote on it tonight, I'd say no. The one that.
Right, yeah, and I, and I, and I agree with that, yeah.
And well, there's no guarantee that they'll show, that they'll switch it to the Magnolia one either. I, I mean, I don't know what they would come up with, but if we told them, you know, what our concerns were, they may have a whole nother route that they were willing to take.
Yes, absolutely. And, and Dave, just to give us a little guidance, you know, it, it, for future reference too, it's probably not, it's not a good idea to just table it, and I think we've already decided that, but I'm just putting that out there. Because that just kind of stalls it. But this way, we can just say more of a denial with, with some suggestions. I guess I'm asking Dave because you're the one that'll be talking to him and, and how do you see, what, what would go the smoothest and, and the best outcome?
To me, the, you know, the clearest one is, is, uh, you know, to not approve it, you know, as submitted. I mean, that, you know, really is. And then just, you know, with the, you know, direction that staff, you know, share some of the discussion that was had tonight, um, with regard to, you know, kind of, again, the, you know, the consistency with the, you know, with the other signs, you know, downtown and, and the overall scale and size of the, you know, how the, you know, again, kind of, you know, the top half of the sign is, you know, kind of this, you know, charac- I guess these characters, you know, images and the bottom half is the, you know, the wording, so.
Thank you. Yeah, so I, you know, whether they want to do something just like at the other place or, or like you, like, uh, you just mentioned, they could, they have all kinds of choices on modifying it. But like Carrie mentioned, uh, you know, they may go down a different road even, but it, we're just pointing it out in their best interest. Uh, but maybe, so if you make the motion, yeah, in that, that way, somehow if it could be mentioned that some of their other location signs may, would probably work better. I've said enough.
We had a motion from Ms. Walker earlier. And now I don't know if that was to deny the sign application as submitted. It was, you know, I think we'd want to, you know, I, I want to make sure I've got a clear direction from you guys in terms of what you're going to do.
I've only heard from me and Brittany and, and Carrie, so what are the other people on this?
Well, that's it. We, we've got, we still have one open position, just so you know, Carol Langley's position, the applications were due in by yesterday, but they have to allow time for mail and whatever. So we will, the city council will be actually ultimately approving, appointing that last fifth position. So it's really the four of us right now, which is fine, we have a quorum, so.
Well, I don't want to slow them down. And so if we deny and say, please resubmit, will that be quicker than just saying, well, let's talk about it?
Ultimately not, because it's still, you know, ultimately has to come back to a planning and zoning meeting, um, unless you guys approved, you know, and alter, you know, part of your motion could say, well, if the, you know, if the characters were gone, and again, don't take this as, you know, literal, but, you know, this, you know, if you wanted to not, you know, for the sign to not come back, it all kind of has to line up and you would have to, you know, say, if you didn't like the characters, you make most approve the sign without any characters. And then if the owners are, you know, willing to do that and they've got a path forward, but if you want to kind of give them, you know, range to come up with something new, then you're right, it does, you know, push things back a month, you know? I don't ever mind, you know, helping businesses with a short-term sign. Um, again, I've not talked to these guys about the one they have, you know, just to help try and bridge the gap, it just can't be the permanent sign where you guys are put in a position of having to tell somebody no after they bought a permanent sign, but, you know, some type of sign that, you know, again, uh, you know, like with what sounds like it's up on the building now.
Is there any idea how close they are to actually opening?
I don't, I'd be honest, I don't know anything.
It's hard to say, yeah. Even if they set a date, it's hard to tell.
Yeah.
But, um, yeah, as long as they know we're, we want to work with them, uh, but I think we probably don't really, we need to see it though, because, you know, I don't think we can make a contingent on.
Yeah.
Did you say whether we deny it or table it with consideration is the same time factor?
That's right, yes, yes ma'am, either one of those. And, you know, to be, you know, again, you know, a denial of the sign as submitted is going to be the clearest i- in terms of, you know, helping, you know, me to, you know, have the conversation move in the direction I need it to go, which is.
They will ask, why was it denied? And you will rebuttal with, well, for the committee, the commission, they looked at the standardization of signs that are surrounding Montgomery and none of them have the characters, uh, characters on them. And it's not in character and or standardization of what the theme or how we're doing signage in Montgomery. And, and then they'll say, well, what do you mean? And you can say, well, the size factor, the body size factor, the characters opposed to the actual sign of what your, what your business name is, is disproportionate to what, what you're advertising. I mean, your sign should advertise boutique and fine jewelry. Your sign draws their attention to the characters.
And you can see by just going through Montgomery, what, what most of their advertisements look like, like their signs look like, that they don't go in that fashion. And, and if they look at them, I think they'll understand what it is we're trying to point at that is an issue.
I think, I make a motion to deny the application and with a contingency that Dave talks to them and understands and we don't hold them up. And hopefully they have a made permanent sign and we can work with them. And if they say, well, what about, I mean, we did look, I don't know who else looked online, but we did look at the character that's on Six Shooter over in Magnolia and it's a smaller version of two, in comparison to the actual name of the business. And, um, there's other signage also that has the pistol on it with Six Shooter as well. It's, um, but when you go on the website, I can see what you looked at, Brittany, was the, to me, it's Daisy Duke, little girl with a hat on, on a saddle, but there's others that have pistol with Six Shooter on it. It just so happened I happened to know, I, you know, about this, I've seen the business myself, so. I move, I make a motion that we deny it with a contingency that Dave talks to them.
I second your motion.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, are there any opposed to the motion? It looks, it's unanimous? And let me just say, that was a very good example, great discussion, y'all, and appreciate you looking up those things. For instance, uh, at the other location, that was very helpful. Uh, and these are the kind of things that, in other words, after much discussion, Dave can mention to them that these points, and that'll be very helpful. So appreciate the discussion and helping to clarify by looking those things up. It helps. Okay, so that was conclusion on item number four. And again, Dave, we are. And again, Dave, we appreciate your communication on that, and this will be moved forward. Item number five, consideration and possible action regarding a review of the sign ordinance. And let me just say, I, I had asked for this at the last meeting, because from time to time, this has come up. I think we're at a point with moving with future growth, it's probably time to revisit. But just so you all know the reason, I, I brought it up primarily for the subject of temporary banners. We don't seem to really be having a problem with the permanent signs. But the temporary banners, if we could discuss, Dave can give us a little background on that. I know there's been times where there were limits of 30 days or 60 days. But two things is, as we move forward, do we want to allow them even on a temporary basis? And then how do we, you know, how does staff, how do we police that? And how can we be helpful in, you know, especially with signs that, banners that do not hold up well in the weather, or possibly taking up bigger than 60% of the total space? That's what we're trying to get away from, so.
And did put together just a short, I'm going to share my screen here for those of you that can see it, but I just put together just a quick, you know, PowerPoint that just kind of helps us, you know, kind of get down to, I guess, to starting the discussion is really, was really my goal here. So with that, you know, kind of, again, I was kind of taking a stab at, you know, some of the issues, at least that I currently see that we have, which also mirror, you know, at least, you know, one or just there, in that, you know, the proliferation of the temporary banners in the downtown area, you know, we're certainly seeing, you know, more of. And, you know, the ordinance as described allows those for 30 days. This year has been a little bit different, just with COVID and, you know, trying not to, you know, come down, you know, too hard in terms of regulations on businesses who are trying to keep customers in their doors. That said, you have to balance your regulations with, you know, kind of, and, you know, within the context of, you know, not letting things get too far out of hand. The wording of the ordinance, the second bullet point there on the screen, the, and the, when you get into some of the temporary signs and type one and type two A signs and type three, it's, there's no, I'm not sure where the, you know, where the ordinance came from, but, you know, my guess, the way you typically get orders, is you take an ordinance, you know, from another city, and you modify it to fit, you know, your city. And back in 2015, when we passed this, again, I, I think there were some, some types of signs that must have been defined somewhere that just didn't make it into our ordinance. And then lastly, I think a lot of it is, I, I think the majority is, you know, just lack of awareness of the sign ordinance from a lot of business owners and operators, you know, both in downtown and other places, because most people don't spend their days reading city ordinances. And so, you know, that said, I kind of moved through into, I kind of moved through into a couple, you know, comments, I guess, on each one of those, just as a point to, you know, be able to address some of these issues. You know, direct contact with business owners, and that's, you know, is, is on staff. The city is, you know, currently growing, we've not had a whole lot of issues in the past. So a lot of it, as I'll often say, is the city, you know, just trying to grow up. And, you know, you got to, you know, kind of start, but a lot of that is going to fall on me in terms of our staffing, but, you know, just contacting the business owners and being a little more diligent about getting out and about and seeing some of these signs. Long-term, we could look at some, you know, ways to revise the ordinance, maybe that made a little more, you know, sense in terms of what, you know, we're trying to accomplish. And that, you know, may be a long-term project that's coming out of this. And again, you know, lastly, you know, both social media, direct mail, utility bill inserts, but, you know, both, I think with that and the historic district, it's an ongoing process. You know, as you have people move out and, you know, new folks move in, you know, some of the knowledge of, you know, what's allowed and what's not gets lost. And so with that, I'll turn it back over to you guys. But if you have thoughts on that or anything else, I'd be glad to talk about it.
Well, thank you, Dave. Let me just, for clarification too, for what we've done in the past, is it presently 30 days that banners are allowed?
Right, they're, you know, from a, we, you know, what they call, you know, with the ordinance, you know, probably rightly gives a little bit of latitude, and they call it a bona fide event. And that can be a grand opening, a going out of business, it could be an anniversary. You just can't have a bona fide event every weekend, that thing.
Because I'm just, my, my thinking is, I, I wondered the, you know, the reality of actually just not having banners at all is probably not such a good idea. I mean, they have their place, I suppose, but that's something we can talk about. Typical, I guess it's pretty typical of most cities to, to allow them for short-term. But then you get, you know, then you have to police it. And let me just add that we've had a few small businesses last year or two, and they've complied. I think some had originally opened with a soft one, but then they did do a, a hard sign. And we just need to remind these people that it's for their own, it's in their own best interest, because any kind of a banner just doesn't look permanent. It just doesn't have a quality look to it. So, you know, it's, like you said, Dave, I think part of it is educating the people, maybe every so often. I don't know how we do that, but, but do we, would it be, should, or should we, should we talk about just not allowing them, period? I don't know.
You know, I think it'd be a tough sell, you know, honestly, to, you know, to eliminate, you know, banners altogether, I think it'd be a tough, you know, hill to get up. But, you know, one of the things too, that, you know, to your point on, you know, kind of hard banners, or, or, you know, hard signs versus soft, you know, kind of vinyl banners, you know, back to that second point on some of the wording in the ordinance, really, you know, the sign industry has kind of changed to these, you know, kind of vinyl graphics, you know, what they call wraps or whatever, but they'll put them on, you know, an aluminum-backed sign. So it's a vinyl sign, you know, what we, you know, talk about a vinyl sign, you know, doesn't always mean nowadays, you know, exactly. It just doesn't get down to the point. So in terms of, you know, some of those ordinance, you know, revisions, kind of acknowledging, you know, what the sign industry is doing these days would help us to, you know, better classify these signs and look at them.
Yeah, so there may be some vinyl signs that are a little bit flexible. I suppose it all depends on how you hang it, if it, if it has a border. But, you know, we.
Right, it could be a vinyl sign on a vinyl banner, but it could be a vinyl graphic that's on a hardback sign. But they're both vinyl signs in the sign world, I guess. And so that's, you know, again, just kind of updating the ordinance to match, you know, what the folks are making and.
Well, the only other thing that I'll have, and I, I don't mean, I don't want to talk too much, but I'm trying to give a little history on some of these. The, the small business recently that did conform, they had a soft sign for opening. But, you know, we, the ones that do conform, obviously, we hate to have them see somebody else that's still got a banner up and it's been, you know, two years or something. So, again, it's just, but I'm trying to understand how the, you know, policing is not always easy too. So whatever we can do to, to make it simple, and, you know, you don't want to have to waste your time policing too much either. So if we're just going to get it upfront, and we, I think on the commission, we'd be happy to, when we do drive around, I'd be happy to, to make a list if I see something. I mean, we'd want to try to help you.
Is there someone that, I'm sorry, is there someone that does that, that checks to make sure signs are in good condition, and that if there is a banner, it doesn't go more than 30 days? Is there anyone that does that?
Not a.
Earlier about the city sign official, and Dave said, he's that person. I'm, I don't know how much more day, more day, what else can we?
With Richard, you know, with Richard and, you know, between, you know, he and I, you know, we're both, you know, we both, you know, do keep an eye on stuff. But, you know, honestly, you know, a lot of it is, you know, when it gets brought to our attention, you know, but it's, you know, you get, you know, stuck behind a desk, and it gets tough to get out and, you know, kind of see, you know, see what you want to see. But, you know, certainly, I'd, I'd welcome any help, you know, if, you know, and you guys always feel open to, you know, if you see something and just have a question, you know, I'm always, you know, available to, you know, to talk about it or, you know, help, you know, solve an issue.
Great, good, I think that would really help, we could all be on board and, and, yeah, it's good for you, Dave. You got to get out a little more, so.
Right.
Get out of that office.
Well, I just want to see, this last bullet point you have is lack of compliance awareness. And you're saying, you know, utility bill insert and all that, but even if it was inserted in your utility bill, depending on who opens that bill, it may not be the owner of that business. It may be the account's payable clerk, and they go, oh, great, another insert, and, you know, throw it away. And I think, I think we're still small enough that we should be able to communicate with our business owners so that, you know, that it's very apparent, like, you know, I'm not quite sure, do they, do they have to get a permit to do a banner? Or are they just allowed to put a banner out? Was that, did you clarify that in our city ordinance or sign ordinance?
Generally, they would get a, you know, as, as a part of, say, you know, for the historic district, it's a little bit different, because, you know, as opposed to say, if you're on 105 and you're not in historic district and you don't need approval, then, you know, you're just waiting on the sign permit, you know. But on these ones that have, you know, kind of, they have to come to P and Z. You know, if the folks have a temporary banner or something, and they ask me, well, is it okay if I put this up for now? Then I'll, you know, tell them that, you know, that I'll, you know, be fine with a 30-day, you know, permit just to meet the meeting window, so they can get an answer on the final sign, you know, to get it made.
How do we keep up with those? Is it electronic, is it a file that paper files? Or how, how do we, how is the current, how do we currently keep up with the permits? As far as the, we're just typically talking about some banners and signs.
Right, also, or so, all of our permits, you know, including signs, or, you know, it's an online database. We've got a hard copy too here. You know, most of us don't, you know, refer to the hard copy, so just because it's easier to find what you need in the software, you know, database than it is to go dig through the file.
I guess we could all make a genuine effort moving forward. I mean, we all, you know, I just, I'm just downstream, but if I do see something, you know, I guess I could ask that question. But again, you know, not knowing the confinement of the ordinance, like some people have, you know, little bitty three-by-five signs, and some people have, you know, bigger banners that, you know, blow through the wind in there. You know, one of the poles goes down, and, hey, Dan, and the sign's really not talked anymore. So I guess that's going to be bombarding you if we just, every time we see a sign, we go, hey, Dave, let's see your sign. You know what I mean? Like, it needs to be, all this needs to, you know, decide that, is that, are we going to be doing the policing? Is that something that the commission wants to do? Or you want to have electronic reminders on a calendar that says, hey, these three businesses need to have their banners broken down?
I think you do it until it's not fun anymore.
Right. About a month.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, that's good. But yeah, and I think it's one of those things where if we can sort of focus on it for a little while, you know, it, it will probably really, if we all are thinking about it, it would really help. And then, then the word gets out, so, you know, it's, it's kind of a, maybe it wouldn't be a problem after a little while.
Right, you know, not one of those things.
Yeah, well, let me just say, it's not a huge problem now, but we see it start to come back every now and then. So, you know, maybe once, once a year, we need to just really focus on it.
Right, absolutely.
On this revision to the document, if you did make a revision to the document, ordinance wording can be in big with, it says word on revision to document. If you were to make a revision to the document, do each, does each business owner in Montgomery get that mailed out to them or get an electronic announcement for it?
Yeah, there would probably be, you know, kind of several announcements, you know, on, on something like this if you're going to change the requirements, you know. Now, now, a lot of, you know, once they're open, once they have their sign, a lot of them, you know, you know, don't have a whole lot of use or need for, you know, kind of what the sign ordinances are, it's, you know, kind of on the front end when folks are coming in. But, you know, certainly, you know, the bigger the change in your regulations, the more, you know, communication, you know, you want to do to make sure that everybody know.
Is, do you have a mass database of the business owners that would have to follow these guidelines? That may be a quarterly email that, that's a re-received?
Right, that's a really good idea. I mean, it'd be worth having, you know.
You know, and then you have, then you have a quarterly reminder, and, and someone's going, oh, damn, it's bothering me again, you know? And then click it, and they'll go, and they'll, we have proof that we sent it to them, and they have a reminder that's a, you know, that, that bothers them and say, hey, you know, I better follow the, the, you know, the wording in the ordinance. I, I'm just, I'm not saying quarterly or what, I'm just making a suggestion. And that would also catch the new owners who live in that address. You know what I'm saying? Like, if it changed ownership or something like that. I, it's just a suggestion. I, I don't want to waste paper, though.
Right.
I don't, the utility bill insert, that's awesome, but.
Well, yeah, and I, I agree, all, those are all good points. Maybe, you know, maybe we could just informally say, pick a month and say, hey, we want to focus on this, and we can communicate a month, you know, it all comes down to good communication. And we could all just try to, you know, pay attention and maybe let Dave know if we see something. So, okay, so this is a consideration and possible action item.
But you certainly don't have to take action on it. I left it, or I worded it that way to give you guys the option, just in case. But certainly, if you don't, you know, there, there can be no action taken, and it'd be, you know, absolutely fine. You know, it'd just be a discussion.
Well, good, we're having lots of good discussions, and this is another, another one. I might just say, since we're on the subject, maybe we should look at January, maybe, for start the year by maybe just kind, you know, think about it for the month of January and communicate informally, communicate with monks ourselves.
You know, and what I'll do, I'll go ahead and give, you know, kind of get a list, you know, working together. That way, we're all looking at the same one. So it'll be important, you know, if we do, that you guys, you know, only reply to me. Just want to make sure we're all in compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, and.
Yes, good point, yeah, and that's good that we discussed that, everybody, yeah, everyone understands that.
Just email me, so.
Okay, yeah, and this will give you, Dave, it'll give you a little time to think about it. And just, again, anything we can do within, within the reason.
Yep.
Great, any other comments, any other thoughts on that, on the signage? Okay, well, we're, that's the last item on the agenda, so we'd be looking for a motion to adjourn.
This is Brittany, and I move to adjourn this meeting.
Is there a second?
I second that.
Right, okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good meeting, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, guys.
Night.